President.
Councilmember Mark Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Cullen.
Here.
Councilmember Christina Rustic.
Here.
Councilmember Susan Torgerson.
Here.
Councilmember Errol Tramalata.
Here.
All are present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Can our clerk please lead us in the flag salute? Before we move on to the consent agenda as indicated on tonight's agenda, if you are attending remotely and would like to submit public comment, please submit your written comments via in-person drop-off mail fax or email to sopa doll at northbendwa.gov by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting. We are no longer taking public comments for those attending remotely via Zoom. We will now move on to our consent agenda. We have six items on our consent agenda and can I get a motion?
Move to approve consent.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries and is unanimous. Now we're going to move some comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an item that is not on our agenda tonight, we would invite you to come forward to the podium. Please remember to state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes to speak. Anybody? Okay. Okay, nope. And our announcements, presentations and appointments, item number seven Parks Commissioner Report and 2024 Work Plan. At this time, I would like to invite Parks Commissioner, Commission Chair Mina Rudd to come forward and provide us the Parks Commission Report for 2024 Work Plan. I'm Mina.
Good evening. That came up quickly. Thank you for this opportunity. So Mina Rudd and serving as the Chair of the Parks Commission. Our fellow commissioners include Brian Duncan, who is also here this evening, as well as Tim Talavich, Eric Thompson, our newest selected commissioner, appointed commissioner Matt Miller, Kyle Braun, Eric Thompson, and then of course our youth representative Kaylee McGee. So a quick review of our 2023 activities. We spent a little bit of money out of the parks, small park budget improvement fund. $5,400 was spent at EJ Roberts Park. This was to restripe the tennis court so that they could also be used for play for pickleball. And this work was completed with the help of Public Works last summer in July. For activities last year, much of our work focused on the updating of the parks element for items such as revising the parks facility information, levels of service policies and the projects that are on the parks capital facilities plan. Then together with the planning commission, we made a recommendation for approval to the city council, which the council did approve with the resolution in June. And that authorizes the park, park element update to be included in the other comprehensive plan updates in 2024. One of the exciting things that happened last summer was the grand opening celebration together with our partners from Seiveu at Tollgate Farm. This was the ribbon cutting event in June for the new barn and infrastructure improvements. We also participated in several public workshops for the master planning efforts for William Henry Taylor Park, as well as the Riverfront Park, provided feedback and then a recommendation for approval by the council for the final concept plan. We took some time to tour our parks. This was in May and June with an eye for long-term maintenance needs and potential future improvements. Last year, we visited EJ Roberts Park, the Torgeson Park, Tollgate Farm Park, as well as the Seiveu Neighborhood Park. We really would like to thank the city's Public Works Group for all their work and working on repairing items that were listed noted on our prior tour list from the previous year. In last fall, we celebrated Arbor Day with a tree planting event over at EJ Roberts Park. And this was together with the citizen organized October Festival, which was very fun with several volunteers. We also reviewed and made a recommendation on park improvements for a new subdivision proposal. These recommendations will be provided to the applicant as well as to the hearing examiner for consideration on the preliminary plot. We also talked a little bit of trash last year, and this has to do with the downtown garbage cans. With the upcoming pending change on a service provider, we talked about options for containers. And then that would improve our current situation where cancer often overflowing in certain areas. We did provide a decision card for council consideration for the 2024 budget on this topic. So that's a brief update on what happened last year. And then going, moving on to this current 2024, we do have a tentative work plan, which we are seeking your input and feedback on any of the items listed. So I'll briefly cover what's under plan. In the spring here, over the next few months, we hope to have two celebrations. One will be the grand opening of the Dahlgrann Family Park and later in the spring for the Tenon Trailhead Park. We're also looking to plan logistics for a potential future dog park over at the Dahlgrann site, which would be a potential capital project for consideration by the city council later on. As we also serve as the city's tree board, we are looking to review and make a recommendation on the urban forestry policies for the comprehensive plan update this spring. And rather than doing parks tours, we're considering trails tours this year for potential future trail connectivity and improvements. And as we get into the summer months, we would like to look for public outreach opportunities with our community at our local community events. We'll also be ready to provide a recommendation how to spend us funding from the small park improvement budget for the year. And there'll be opportunity to coordinate with Public Works on some park and trail related improvements on projects that are currently in the plans and coming down the pike in the next few years. Examples include the South Fork Snoqualmie River, Leviset Park Project, as well as the Tollgate Farm, the Downtown Trail. There's a roundabout landscaping and planning for the Bendigo Boulevard and Mountside Boulevard intersection over at State Route 202 and Bendigo Boulevard, the bridge design and trail improvements, Mountside Road and North Bendway intersection, the Tanner Trail Extension and potentially Cedar Falls Way Trail. We'll also be in the summertime making a recommendation on future, future use of park impact fees as well as any park related items for the 2025 budget year under the decision card process. Then later in the fall, we hope to have an opportunity to review and make a recommendation for our city's park directional signage improvements to help provide connectivity between the parks. We also would like to take some time to review and provide input to the draft shoreline access plan. And of course, plant tree board and Arbor Day activities for late fall, which is the best time to do plantings here in our community. And should there be any parking review projects for future developments, we'll certainly address those as they come in. And there's a brief recap of activities planned for next year. And on behalf of the commission, I'd like to thank you for all your support as we continue to work together to enhance our local parks and recreation resources in the city. And I would invite any comments, feedback or questions that you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Rudd?
Not so much a question, just more wow. That's a massive list you've got going there. That's fantastic. Thank you to all and all the commissioners for everything that you're doing. I mean, the parks are such a vital asset to our community, both in recreation, but also in spirit, right? You see the open spaces, you see the beautiful areas when you walk or drive by. It adds such incredible value to our community. So everything that you guys are doing with making the signage and connectivity and improvements, even down to the garbage cans. I mean, this is like amazing stuff that you guys are doing. So thank you very much. Keep up the good work and anything else, obviously, it's a council member or the council can do to support this. I'm sure you'll have all in panel up here. So thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you. We'll share. Thank you, Brendan. Anyone else?
You do an amazing job and our city is really lucky to have our parks commissioners. My question is, my favorite part of your whole packet was the tree that hadn't been planted in years. Has that gotten planted yet?
I'm sorry, which tree?
There was a tree that's in a pot out by the escape of Torgeson.
Oh, Torgeson Park. Actually, that's a great question because that was a seasonality thing, just as the Arbor Day celebration turned out to be. Finding the perfect location in the right season.
I liked it that you added it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mina, thank you so much for your excellent presentation, all your hard efforts. I'm thrilled. So thank you for that. Thank you very much. Okay, item eight, Economic Development Commission Report. At this time, I would like to invite our Economic Development Commission Chair Martin Mason-Pierre to come forward and provide us the Economic Development Commission Report.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk about the work that we were able to accomplish over the last year. So I'm Martin Mason-Pierre. I am the Chair of the Economic Development Commission. My fellow commission members, we've got Nick Jensen, who is newly appointed along with Beth Burrows, who joined us today. And we had Christina. Congratulations Christina. Thank you for all the work. And then Chris Castleberry as well. So it was a really great year. I mean, we worked hand in hand with Mark Knoll, who's no longer with us here in North Bend, but welcomed James Henderson. So it's been an absolute pleasure to work with him as we kind of kick things off for the new year. Two slides ahead now. Perfect. So for 2023, some of our major accomplishments was really working on our Economic Development Action Plan. So we finalized the plan and sent that to council for approval in June. So that was a lot of work and many, many conversations over what we thought were going to be some of the key elements in there. We also established a role to have, to advocate directly with the council and to be able to talk about implementation and the overall strategic direction for the action plan. Beyond that, we work with, in terms of business outreach, providing input into North Bend Business Bulletin and just really looking at ways that we can continue to communicate and better involve the larger business community here in North Bend. And last but not least, the comprehensive economic development piece was a major, major piece of work. So that was looking at a number of different economic development plans that have been put together dating all the way back to 2015. So there was quite a lot of cross-tabulation in terms of what we have planned, what's actually been implemented, what we've made progress on and what has stalled. Obviously, the environment today is very different than it was in 2015 in terms of population and businesses. So it was really great to see how much progress had actually been made on so many of those pieces. And really at the end approved the element for review by, by the planning commission as well. So looking forward to 2024, some of the main buckets that we've been discussing are really growing the creative arts community here within North Bend. Beth here has been integral and really helping drive that piece. Looking at further ways for us to continue to strengthen the downtown. Certainly continues to be vibrant and flourish. And I think they still have quite a lot more that we can do to continue to attract people here. A part of that obviously is assisting small businesses and helping those get established. It's been wonderful to see so many new businesses opening up here and empty storefronts being, being filled in. We have a very low vacancy rate, I think, as we've all seen. And then something that's definitely near and dear to my heart is solidifying the outdoor brand and the outdoor element of our town in terms of, you know, bringing folks in and really capturing all the folks who are coming through from different areas, from the greater Seattle area to visit our amazing parks and all of the other pieces in and around. So in terms of our 24 work plan, we've got a few pieces that we are concentrating on now. We started with a very wide list of pieces that we want to accomplish, but kind of quickly whittled those down to pieces that we thought could really be actionable in the next year. So part of that, working with Beth to build a North Bend filmmaker guide and database, so really encouraging more cinematography here in the valley. I think we all know how big a driver of tourism that has been in the past and how beautiful this area is for inclusion in, in movies. Hike bike map and guide. So really just helping individuals who are either living here or folks who are coming through, understand where and how to kind of connect our various trail systems, whether that be by bike or on foot. And then a business sign guide. So develop guidelines and policies that really simplify and clarify the allowable signs within the downtown to have some kind of clarity in terms of what's what and, you know, maybe a bit more brand language there. A small business expansion guide. So that really fairly self-explanatory, but really facilitate business expansion for smaller developers and businesses. So really having kind of a step-by-step guide on how they, how folks may be able to develop here without having to kind of learn everything by, by hook or by crook. And then the last piece is working and focusing on finding budget to build out an outdoor marketing campaign. So to really market the town and all of its recreational activities to a larger population and be able to get folks to really come and visit here, especially with some of the new hotels that hopefully will be opening, going in and opening fairly soon. So I think just last on that piece is, you know, we work very closely with the Downtown Foundation and the Snow Valley Chamber of Commerce. So definitely want to give them a shout out for all of the amazing work that they do and the support that they give to the city overall. So next steps here are really kind of finalize our work plan, develop performance metrics across each one of these pieces. We want to be able to make sure that the things that we are all collectively doing are, are working and having smart measurements to understand and be able to look back and see whether things are going well or not so well. And then really implement those projects with our various economic development partners and city staff and obviously the council here. So with that, that concludes my 2023 look back and forward-looking 24 plans. So thank you very much for the opportunity. And yeah, please let me know if there are any questions that I can answer or push off to James to answer.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Mason?
Yeah. The outdoor marketing plan, is that, is there a focus on that regionally, like nationally, like what is, what has been discussed in terms of how far reach are we shooting?
That's a, that's a great question. I think at this point, one of the pieces that we may be looking at is whether there is potential funding from the Port of Seattle. So I think there'd be some discussion in terms of grant money on, you know, do they have specifications on what that reach looks like? So I think at this point, that is much more of an open discussion. I think we clearly have quite a few folks who are coming here from the greater Seattle area. But I think being able to capture folks who are coming through to hike, to be able to spend more of their time and money within the downtown. So I think that would be a primary focus and then probably statewide next.
Brendan, I saw your hand up there.
Thank you. Thank you. Incredible. It's awesome. And I love seeing how every elements in your work plan are totally on point with at least what most of us have been here. A lot of us campaigned on, right? So it's really good to see that reflected up here in a PowerPoint. When thinking about the, the elements, the work plan and your KPIs, which is fantastic, is there already a schedule when that should be done and when it will be coming through committee? Is kind of my first question, is that, is that, those agendas been earmarked yet?
Not yet. I think that's going to be our topic of discussion for our next commission meeting, which is in two weeks, I believe.
That'd be great because I think especially once you have your KPIs set up and it'd be neat to understand that also from the finance standpoint. So I know it'll come through the Community Economic Development Committee, but if we could also have a roadshow and the finance, that would be fantastic. And then piggybacking on Errol's point there about regional, where are you going with the focus? I'm wondering if there's overlap, especially with the filmmaking piece, right? Because that's more than just a central, you know, more than just a Washington scope. So I'm wondering if there's ways to do some hybridization or overlap across those different elements to make or get the best bang for your buck on multiple things. Just, just the idea, but.
Absolutely. And I think kind of in conjunction with that, also looking at some of the amazing nonprofits that we have in terms of Evergreen Mountain Bike Alliance and WAC. So I think being able to get input from them in terms of like how we can socialize these things out to, to larger audiences here and be able to piggyback or work in conjunction with them on those larger marketing efforts.
That's great. Thank you. Absolutely.
Anybody else? Mark? No questions. Just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for all your work. I know as Brendan mentioned, this, this represents the interests of all of North Bend citizens, a variety of different interests, and I think it well captures all that diverse interest. So thank you.
And thank you for all your work on.
Martin, thank you so much for your excellent presentation, all the hard work that goes into it, and I'm excited for the future too. So great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We will move on to commission and committee reports. And we'll start with Mr. Jocelyn, CED, please.
Yes, the regular meeting of the Community Economic Development Committee happened earlier today. We had a rather full agenda. Items that were discussed included a Snoqualmie Valley Economic Alliance Memorandum of Understanding with other valley cities and the tribes to pull together sort of a regional entity to, well, and also the, sorry, King County Local Government Group to seek additional grant funding and promote mutual interests that are shared amongst the communities. We discussed developers agreement for the Sirius Sport Facility adjacent to Meadowbrook Farm, which is transferring ownership and that prompts a need to also transfer the existing development agreement. There's an update to the building code that's coming forward in anticipation of changes in state law related largely to the wildland urban interface and impacts that that will have on residents and city staff moving forward. We discussed a on-call contract for professional services in support of plan review and city staff. There's a $100,000 grant forthcoming from the Department of Ecology on shoreline public access and trail plans to help better communicate and share information regarding shoreline access with our constituents. And then they contract with DCG Watershed Inc. relative to that same DOE grant to bring onboard necessary expertise to make good use of it and see that it is used towards the ends that were anticipated. We also then discussed our schedule for the coming year and CED will be meeting at four o'clock the third Tuesday of the month. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see for Finance and Administration Chairman Brendan Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance Committee did not meet December 12th, nor in January. Our next meeting will be February 13th at 4:00 PM in the adjournment room to my left. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Public Health and Safety, Councilmember Christina Rustic. Yes, thank you. The December 5th, the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting was canceled. Why, thank you for that. Okay, short and sweet. Okay, Transportation Public Works, Councilmember Errol Tramalata.
Short and sweet again. TPW met on December 12th, three o'clock in the adjournment room. And all of the items discussed were on the agenda tonight. So we are well versed.
And right next to me, Mayor Proten.
I'm going to go along, along with that theory of we did counsel the December 26th work study to give everybody time for their families. So be prepared for our next work study, which will be busy. And if you'd like, I can roll right into Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Oh, let's do that.
All right. So Eastside Fire and Rescue, let me pull that up. Met on January 11th at 4:00 PM at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters. We had a couple of spouse recognition, we had a couple of oath of offices. We have a new deputy director to Wendy Moffett that came from the city of all and a new emergency manager by the name of Greg Bodwin. We had several recognitions of individuals that got promoted, which was always fun and a lot of fun to go through. The only regular item that we had on the agenda was discuss code conduct statement, and we did pass that. The fire chiefs briefing had a little bit more information on it. They hosted a first open house of 2024 at Station 91, which is on Mercer Island. Eastside Fire and Rescue and King County Fire District 45 have developed and administered by ILA. And the staff has been supportive and their visit will be visiting or did visit with the fire commissioners out there on January 10. Our arbitration timeline has been extended. There is no specific date to that. That's the arbitration with the union regarding the COVID mandate. We will be joining a bunch of legislative people and January 23rd at the legislative day. And then we also welcomed a bunch as we talked, new members, and that was it.
Thank you. Okay, Planning Parks and Economic Development Commission Reports, Rebecca, do you have anything for us tonight?
Thank you. The Planning Commission met January 3rd for a public workshop on land use designations, zoning and updates to the land use and housing elements as part of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The workshops included an overview of the Growth Management Act and new legislation requirements and display boards around the row. The display boards includes maps and policies of the current comprehensive plan for comments depicting potential zoning amendments that could enable the city to meet state required housing targets at different affordability levels, dockets related to land use designations and zonings that were received during the 2022-2023 docket cycle, and all seeking public input on these items. Just note, we've also posted those all on the website to seek additional input from the public. The Planning Commission will next meet tomorrow Wednesday, January 17th. And we will hold a public hearing for the development agreement with Peak View LLC for the Snoqualmie Valley Athletic Center or Sirius Sports Facility. This DA transfers the obligations from the previous DA to and its amendments from the previous property owner to a new property owner and extends the timeframes to complete the second phase of the project in consideration of the timeframe necessary for the Meadowbrook U-Lid to complete the sewer line improvements to the area. to complete the sewer line improvements to the area. The Park Commission did not meet in December. They will next meet January 24th and will review the tree canopy assessment prepared by the city, for the city by Planet Geo and consideration of potential urban forestry policies for the comprehensive plan update. And we'll discuss potential locations and options for North Bend Dog Park, which you all heard about. The Economic Development Commission did not meet in December. Their next meeting is January 3rd, and the commission will discuss the implementation of their 2024 work plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Regional committees, is there anyone on council that would like to provide any report?
Yes. King County Border Health did not meet in December. The next meeting is this Thursday, the 18th at 1:00 via Zoom. You may have a full year planned. I will let you in on when I find out.
Thank you. Anybody else? Nope. Okay, let's move on to the main agenda. And let's see, item nine, AB 24-008, Resolution Authorizing Economic Development Element Adoption for 2024 Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Demming, will you please provide the staff report?
I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to James, our Economic Development Manager, to provide this report.
Excellent.
Thank you so much, Rebecca. Uh, as Martin, uh, briefed you earlier on, one of the main bodies of work the Economic Development Commission did last year was to work on the economic development element for the comprehensive plan. And although this is, uh, not a mandatory part of the plan, I think it's very important to be able to include this element in the comprehensive plan to basically serve in some ways sort of demonstrate the importance of economic development for the city of North Bend, especially its residents. Uh, basically this, uh, this element really summarizes the statistics and data that's going on in North Bend's economy, provides an overview of both the strengths and weaknesses in North Bend's economy. And then, uh, basically puts in place goals and strategies to mitigate those weaknesses or enhance those strengths throughout, throughout the economy in North Bend. Uh, this, uh, element was taken to the planet to, was passed by the Economic Development Commission in September 26th. And then was presented to the Planning Commission, which, uh, moved it forward, uh, for consideration on November 15th. Um, for your consideration for adoption as part of the overall comprehensive plan. Uh, with that, happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Does council have any clarifying questions? Appears no. Okay, um, let's see. If any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. Remember, please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. I don't see anybody. Okay, well, there you go. Councilmember Jocelyn, will you please make the motion?
I move adoption, or I move approval of AB 24008, the resolution authorizing adoption of the Economic Development Element Update for the 2024 North Bend Comprehensive Plan.
Do I have a second? Second. Thank you. All right, uh, let's see. So the motion for us is to approve AB 240.
Mayor?
Oops, sorry. Yep.
Um, did you want to give the council opportunity to speak?
Yeah. Let's do that.
Uh, this topic's been, I, I guess I could wait for recognition.
Yes.
Uh, thank you. Pardon me. Uh, this has been touched on a couple of times previously, both, uh, in the report from the Economic Development Commission uh, and the report provided, uh, by James. Um, it's a voluntary element, as was noted, and yet important. Uh, the updates are important. It provides, uh, you know, it, you can look back and also it helps then project forward as to, uh, what has happened and what we anticipate happening. And I appreciate all the time, energy, thought that's gone into it and would urge approval.
Anyone else have any other? No, a second. Is there a second? Yep, yep.
Oh, well, I was just gonna say that.
Rustic, okay, let's move back. Christina, take it on.
Yes, um, it has, having been part of, uh, the review of this, um, and there was a lot of, uh, detailed conversations that have occurred over the last year. And I think that we've thoroughly vetted this for approval. So now, does anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
I don't have a question. I just want to say, you all, as part of the planning commission, and I, it's so well thought out and James did an amazing job. Has all these metrics on there. I just want to shout out his name again because it's, it's when we were in the planning commission, we were like blown away of how great this was written. So, so I just want to give you a lot of kudos. It's, thank you, James.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, now, now it's time. The motion before us to, is approve, to approve AB 24-008, a resolution authorizing adoption of the Economic Development Element Update for the 2024 North Bend Comprehensive Plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Six to one, six, 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 seven, zero. Pardon me. Okay. All right, and oh my, okay, item 10, AB 24-009, Motion Authorizing Contract with West Consultants. Mr. Regos, will you please provide the report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Page 101 in your packets. Um, this is something I've had my eyes on for several years as a possible study. Um, city of North Bend is a little bit unique that half of our city is within the 100-year floodplain. So, um, that's created by the Middle Fork Snoqualmie River, South Fork Snoqualmie River, Ryberry Creek and Gardner Creek. Um, those base flood elevations change as you move from east to west. In some places downtown, the, the 100-year floodplain, you could be three or four feet deep. Otherwise, other areas, it's one foot deep. Over the river, you might be 20 feet deep. Um, so it's a big deal, um, this 100-year floodplain in terms of, um, regulating growth, um, how, how, um, homes and, and businesses, uh, grow in downtown. And, and, um, we've seen with the Habitat for Humanity Project how it was raised two or three feet from existing grade. So, um, it's a regulatory requirement. Um, and, and my feeling is that, um, there's an opportunity to lower the base flood elevation in several areas of the city. Um, and that's based on conversations I've had with several of my engineers. Um, some of the benefits, if we were to be able to, uh, uh, reduce the 100-year floodplain, would be less expensive insurance rates, rate premiums for property owners in the floodplain. Number two is removing some of the properties from the floodplain. Three, it's an improved tool for new businesses, homes and school district facilities, among others. There's been talk about North Bend Elementary School having a retrofit, so certainly this would impact them. Um, the start of the floodplain is about Torgerson Park, and as he moved west and north, that's the area of the city that's encumbered by the 100-year floodplain. A fourth benefit is, would be a peace of mind for residents, uh, and business owners who live or operate within the 100-year floodplain. And fifth, there's less costly measures if and when planning to redevelop properties in the floodplain. So, um, I've worked with this consultant once or twice before and had successful results. This would be, uh, a phase one. It would take three or four months to see if there's a potential opportunity to lower the base flood elevations within city limits. So happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mark. Do you have any clarifying questions, council? Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you, and, and I apologize for not thinking of this question beforehand. If we do this, will this be credible data and insights that FEMA would recognize its legitimacy?
Yeah, I believe so. They, they will be doing, um, surveys of those four water courses within city limits. And those surveys, they will calibrate based on flood cross-sections that were developed back in the 70s, 80s and 90s when, um, the FEMA Federal Emergency Management Agency produced what's called Firms.
Yeah.
Sorry, a lot of acronyms for flood insurance rate maps. And, um, these are licensed civil engineers. Many of them have masters and PhDs. And so, yeah, I do believe that, um, uh, FEMA's engineers will give, uh, credibility, uh, to, to our consultant West, um, in doing their work. So I, I don't see any, I don't, I don't, I'm not super concerned about it.
Okay. And then an extension of that, and I know it's kind of a crystal ball question. Does it, do you think that there'd be a heavy lift? For example, if we run the analysis and it comes back that we can in fact move our 100-year floodplain because of the blasting they did at the falls and, and whatnot. Um, do you think that's a heavy lift to get, uh, the insights, the data and the recommendations bought into the state and other agencies?
I think it's a medium lift. So this scope of work is around $35,000.
Hmm.
Um, and my guess is it would be over slightly over six figures. So around 100, 150,000 dollars to do, to evaluate every base flood elevation in the city limits. So it's a, it's a large area. It's half our city. So they're looking at, you know, four water courses. And do they drop in some areas, it may not drop and may actually raise half a foot. In other areas, it could drop two feet. Um, so they're looking at the levees. Um, they're looking at, um, you know, isopolluvials for the area, the rate, that's rainfall data, how much rainfall in 24 hours. Um, they're looking at, they'll go out and, and do, um, boots on the ground surveying of all the culverts. We have some really large culverts flowing into the river. So, um, I think, you know, it'd be somewhere in that low hundred thousand dollar range, and that would probably take 12 to 18 months, that phase two.
And then the third question is, do you think any of the findings of these could help work with what's happening on the river with King County? Uh, and what they're doing with the levy repairs and things like that? Cause, cause there's a lot of activity happening on that. So I'm just not sure how this would influence that as well.
Yeah, this would be really valuable data to city of Snoqualmie and to King County Flood Control District, looking at everything above Snoqualmie Falls. Because if city of North Bend, if we're able to lower the floodplain one or two feet, then you bet city of Snoqualmie will likely be able to do the same thing. So, um, and there is some unincorporated King County areas between North Bend, Snoqualmie, where the engineers are looking at how high should these levees be? We have a, our own capital project. It's a levy setback project that, hey, maybe we can lower this levy by a foot or so because we don't need it to be so high. So, um, so yeah, very valuable.
Great. Thank you very much.
Council, any more clarifying questions? No? Okay, if any members of the audience would like to comment on this agenda item, we would invite you to come forward to the podium at this time. Please remember to state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to speak. Okay, we're gonna move on quickly now. Councilmember Colan, will you please make this motion?
Yep, sorry. Motion to approve AB 24-009, authorizing a contract with West Consultants to prepare a Phase One floodplain study in an amount not to exceed $35,793 in a form and contract acceptable to the city attorney.
Second.
Uh, would you care to comment?
I think we live in a very unique area in King County. I think it's important that we look at our rivers and flooding. And if we can get more affordable insurance rates for people, that would be great. So I do say we move forward.
And Councilmember Elwood, would you like to come?
Oh, are you giving me the second, Your Honor? Or was that my esteemed colleague to my left?
Susan. Oh, well, I think this is a great idea. Um, it'll help with a lot of people being flood insurance is very expensive. And if it turns out you're not in a floodplain area, fabulous. You don't have to pay a thousand dollars a year for flood insurance. So I think it's a great idea for all of our citizens.
Thank you. Any additional comments from council? No? Okay, okay.
I was gonna say, um, I think it's important to pass this because I think what we just passed with the Economic Development, um, plan, part of the comp plan, this follows suit with the infrastructure analysis. I mean, floodplains are immensely impactful to whether you redevelop or identify a site for a small business or, or something like that, like we talked about. So I'm excited about this opportunity to see where this goes, and I hope council can, can support that. Um, it's, it's one step closer to figuring out, you know, how do we unlock the next opportunities in town?
Any other additional comment?
Just one, Your Honor. Right. Um, yeah, I, I, I concur. I think this is a great analysis. I, I, I appreciate that we're taking it head on. I mean, for years, there's always been local argument. Did the floodplain, is it actually what it is? FEMA uses best available science. It goes back 20, 30 years. Things move. We see the river shift. So it's about time that we actually take our own destiny in our hands. And I think this is one step towards doing that, especially, uh, to Mr. Tramalata's point about, uh, economic development. Um, this, this I think is a good thing. So I hope it does pass.
Okay, the motion before us is to approve AB 24-009, authorizing a contract with West Consultants to prepare a Phase One floodplan study in the amount not to exceed $35,793 in a form and content acceptable to the city attorney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Looks like it's unanimous. Seven, zero. We will now move on to Mayor, Council and Administrative Concerns and Initiatives. And let's start with Mr. Elwood at the end there, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I don't have any concerns at the moment, other than I, you know, I'm enjoying the cold, but I would like it to warm up during the day at least. But, uh, stay safe, stay warm. Uh, happy January.
And Mr. Rustic.
Uh, well, I just want to thank both of the committees that came and did their presentation day. Both of them were done very well, and I appreciate all the information they provided. And I'd also like to add that stay safe and warm out there. It's icy and cold.
And then Councilmember Colan. Okay, uh, Councilmember Tramalata.
Uh, yeah, just stay safe, especially at around the schools. There's a lot of ice in the parking lots. Leave a little earlier to drop off the kiddos. It's a little hectic right now. So drive slow, take your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Errol. And now it's Councilmember Jocelyn.
Uh, echoing, uh, other concerns. But I do just want to remind us where we live. That the weather and the wind and the snow and the cold are in fact beyond any of our control. And what we are capable of doing as a city is managing for those things as best we can. And if there's one thing this council is aware of and that staff is aware of, is that the challenges that are presented by winter weather and keeping streets so, uh, safe, homes accessible and services provided. But even that sometimes is beyond our control because Mother Nature is gonna win, you know? So it's just a plea to, for understanding and patience and recognition that there are people, uh, available, working and on point, trying really hard both to anticipate and respond to, uh, the conditions that, uh, present themselves. I enjoy living in a mountain community. I love ramming around in the mountains. And when the wind is up, you know, you hunker down a little bit and count your blessings, but you also be patient. Uh, and that's what I'm appealing for. Uh, so do be safe and, uh, you know, thanks.
Councilmember Rustic.
Yes, thank you. Um, as everybody has already said, yeah, slow down, uh, drive safely. And, uh, uh, in some cases, uh, check your school, whether they're open or not. I know we've had some situations where some of the schools have been impacted by, uh, the cold weather and freezing. And quite a few homeowners have impacted by, uh, pipes freezing and whatnot. So, uh, where you can help out, uh, definitely do that. We, um, check on our neighbors. So, thank you.
Councilmember Ellen.
I, I think my fellow council members did it the best, so I'm not even gonna add to safety tonight. So have a good night, everybody, and a safe evening.
And Mr. Miller, Dave Miller, please.
I'd like to take this opportunity to give a shout out to the public works guys. Um, you could have ice skated on Moon Valley Road. When I got into town, we didn't have any problems. I mean, the ice are work, the sand work. They were out there right away and it's been very safe. And I assume they're just gonna keep that same job going. But, um, I haven't heard any complaints from the public, other than we've had some pipes that have burst, but, uh, doing a great job.
Thank you. Uh, city is seeking applicants to fill a vacancy on the Business and Economic Development Commission. For more information about the commission and how to submit an application is available on the news section of the city website. Application deadline is February 2nd. Resources for winter weather preparedness, which includes a 2024 snowplow route map, snow plowing and street treatment FAQ and snow removal policy is available for viewing on the news section of the city website. If you missed the 7th, I'm sorry, the January 3rd Public Workshop on Land Use and Housing Elements Designations and Zoning, please connect with us by January 34th first to provide your feedback. Doing so will help advise staff on drafting the 2024 comp plan update. Email comments to Community and Economic Development Director Rebecca Demming at rdemming@northbendwa.gov. And I would like to extend a special thank you to our city staff members, Aaron Mitchell, Lisa Escobar, Bree Caverin and Don DeBerg for manning the warming shelter that was open during the la- and Don DeBerg for manning the warming shelter that was open during the day, the last day of Friday and during the day on Friday and Saturday. And also a personal thanks to our Public Works team who worked their tails off. And I didn't hear one peep out of the community of a negative sort. So that's outstanding. And thank you again. At this time, could have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you.